Good evening. If you're gonna speak on an agenda item or under public participation, I ask you to fill out a card, and if you want to speak on more than one item, make a card for each item, please. Tonight, we're gonna allow the public to speak under public participation on consent agenda items, if you care to talk about anything. So if you want to talk about a consent agenda item before it gets passed, you can do it under public participation. We need a card. Thank you. We're gonna- Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. We're gonna call our meeting to order for February 18th, the City Council Meeting in the City Chambers. Would you please stand for the Pledge of Legions, please? Ms. Kellum, would you please lead us, please?
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And welcome to everybody. We're gonna go right into our public participation. I have two cards, if somebody else wants to fill one out.
Roll call.
Oh, I'm sorry. Roll call, please.
Mayor Potem Brown.
Here.
Mayor Hoag.
Here.
Councilmember Kellum.
Here.
Councilmember Morrison.
Here.
Councilmember Raymond.
Here.
Hey, we have Tony DeVito.
I live at 8416 Canaveral Boulevard. Been a resident here for four years.
Could you pull that mic up a little bit?
Is that better?
Thank you.
And I know that the city has an interest in Sherry Downs Park, as we do, we go there almost every day. Karen, my wife, and I have been working with the county and have received permission to donate a bike rack for Sherry Downs, location approximately between what I call the two headstones near the fence. It will be located there to be manufactured, the first part of next month of March. Karen and I are taking care of the cost of this. It's being produced locally by Low Rider Bicycle Company and be powder coated by a firm at the port. It will be 10 feet in length, shaped like a fish, facing east and west. Should hold about 10 bicycles, so that we who live here have someplace to put our bikes without having to just tie them to one of the wooden railings. And I just wanted to let you know that we were doing this, and if there's any questions. But we've been working on this, getting this, for about three years now. And we finally have permission from Fred and from Tom Kirk, I guess he's a park supervisor too, who's over the Colonnus and Sherry Downs Park.
Thank you. That's very thoughtful.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, our next card is Art Berger.
My name's Art Berger. I'm a local resident for 36 years, property owner, business owner in the city, and I just wanted to take a second and speak about your selection for your new city manager. I have had the pleasure to serve on council with Bob Hoag and Rocky and Planning and Zoning Board, and through the years, I've seen several city managers come and go. The new one, or Todd, is probably about the best you're gonna get. He has something that no other candidate would have, and that's history. And if you don't have history, you're doomed to repeat it. I have worked with this gentleman since he was a building official, inspector, all the way up to where he is now, and he would do the city the best service that I think the city could get. And I think his history and his knowledge of events and things that have happened through the years would be one of the best assets you could get, and I just wanted to bring that to your attention. Thank you.
Thank you, Art. Morgan Humby or Hamby?
Hamby.
Hamby? Looks like a U. That's what I was-
Close it up.
My baby.
Good evening.
Good evening. Hi. The whole fam's gonna come up with me, probably.
And why not?
We were here in January. We spoke, we live on Madison Avenue, and we were speaking about the traffic and how it continues to exceed the speed limit of 20 miles per hour. So we actually were talking to our neighbors, and we started a petition. We have over 100 signatures here, and they were, we got them only in the last couple days. Everyone who I spoke with agrees that the traffic in Cape Canaveral is a problem, but especially on Madison Avenue. I was speaking with some high school students, and they said just two days ago, their friend almost got hit on her bicycle. Last night, we were speaking to our neighbor, and she said someone was peeling out, going 40 miles an hour, and pulled into one of those rental condominiums. She called the sheriff department, but unless they catch them in the act, there's nothing they can do. If you go to Madison, you can see where the skid marks are of that incident. They're on our street. So in our petition, we asked if people were in favor of a four-way stop, or speed humps, or both, and you can see what they indicated. We'll give this to you. We've scanned copies as well. And again, I spoke with more than 100 people, and the only, there were three people who wouldn't sign. Two of them said they don't put their signature on anything, and so I said, okay. And the third one said the solution needs to be dirt roads instead of paved roads. So, but it was unanimous where everyone said that this is a problem, and there are a lot of kids on our street, and-
Yeah, so specifically, it's the two-way versus four-way stops. It's confusing for a lot of people. They don't know if they're pulling up to a two-way or a four-way stop. I see a lot of near misses almost daily, and I know there's some sort of planning behind that, how many two-way stops and four-way stops are in a row, but this is a kind of a transient community. We have a lot of out-of-towners, and I just, they just assume every stop they pull up to is gonna be a four-way stop, and they're very surprised when they see the car going the other way, just blow right through it, because they don't have to stop. And then when you have a two-way stop in between, you know, you have a stop sign, four-way stop, or you have a stop sign, then you don't have a stop sign, they have a long runway to get some speed up going. And so the sheriff's department did drop off a speedometer.
Yeah, we've noticed that there has been, and I saw a patrol officer there monitoring.
Yeah. Yeah, and so-
So we noticed there's-
When that's there, they definitely slow down, but it was only there for three days, and it's back to normal, so. So specifically, we asked for who wants a four-way stop, and then who wants speed humps.
And surprisingly, a lot of people said both. So again, we'll leave this for you. I can hand it to you, or-
Just give it to the deputy over there.
Okay. All right. Thank you so much.
Either there. Supposed to go to the lady first.
Yeah, so I mean, is there any other avenue to get this accomplished, other than just coming up here and requesting it?
It's been heard many times on the ears, and maybe we're working with a little bit different situation today.
Yeah.
So hopefully, you know.
We can get more signatures, too. I'm 100% convinced.
We're aware of it. We're all aware of it.
Okay.
Very much, but thanks for coming personally. Thank you.
We'll get working on that.
Okay, that's the last of my cards. Does anybody want to mention anything about consent agenda on public participation? If you're in, we'll close public participation.
Mr. Mayor, were you asking the council if we want to pull anything?
Yes.
Yes.
You gotta come back to us first, sir.
We've got presentations next.
We got presentations, yeah, but we're gonna, go ahead, and if you want something to pull, pull something. Nikki?
Uh, no.
Angela?
No.
Les?
I'd like to pull item number seven.
Seven?
Please.
Where? Mike?
Yes.
Okay. We'll look for a motion to pass items one through six.
Mr. Mayor, I know that we pass items on the consent agenda, one through six.
I'll second it.
Turn over the presentations.
Why is that on our? Yeah, but he jumped the gun on me. Let's, I just been corrected, we do have the presentations to do first, like I started to, but then we have in our, which one did you pull? On ordinance, okay. Moving. But let's do our presentations, because that does include some of the consent agenda. So you got me cornered. All right, presentations, a proclamation to the staff for Cape Canaveral Public Library recognizing. And I believe that's Molly Thomas. Molly's gonna present the proclamation to the library staff.
You guys ever wonder what makes our little library so amazing? These are the papers.
So for those who were not aware, February is National Library Lovers Month, and so we would like to make it official by declaring this proclamation. Whereas the purpose of a public library is to provide resources and services in a variety of media to meet the needs of a community for education, information, personal development, recreation, and leisure. And whereas libraries play an important role in the development and maintenance of a democratic society by facilitating inclusive access to a wide and varied range of knowledge, ideas, and opinions. And whereas libraries are a significant value to their communities by providing educational and cultural enrichment opportunities and acting as a positive agency for change on both individual and community levels. And whereas libraries have a special responsibility to meet the needs of children and young people who find such excitement in the works of the imagination and benefit from enriching experiences throughout their lives, thereby enhancing their contribution to society and the future of our community. And whereas the city of Cape Canaveral has not just a single public library, but now seven little free libraries that serve its community as well. Therefore, our mayor, Robert E. Hoag, mayor of City of Cape Canaveral, Brevard County, Florida, does hereby proclaim February 2020 as National Library Lovers Month in the city of Cape Canaveral, and he does hereby encourage our residents to visit one of our many library locations and enjoy the wealth of knowledge, inspiration, and imagination that they have to offer.
We'll take a picture.
Thank you. Thank you all for what you do.
Yes, thank you.
Community loves it. Thank you, Molly, wherever you went. There you go. All right, next one is a presentation, a proclamation declaring 2020 the year Problem Gambling Awareness Month for the month of March. And I'm gonna let Mayor Potem Mike Brown do this one.
Whereas recognizing Problem Gambling Awareness Month, PGAM, demonstrates support in addressing problem gambling and the initiative of the Florida Council on Compulsive Gambling to bring awareness to the issues surrounding problem gambling in our community. And whereas problem gambling is a serious public health issue which impacts family, friends, and businesses with significant societal and economic costs, affecting more than 1 million Floridians of all ages, races, and ethnic backgrounds in our communities. And whereas it is estimated that more than 6 million Floridians of every age, race, ethnicity, and socioeconomic status suffer from problem gambling and needs treatment. And whereas each problem gambler directly affects eight to 10 other individuals with negative consequences to personal and social relationships of immediate family. And whereas the issue of problem gambling is a community issue, as eight to 10 people are affected for every one problem gambler, and conservative estimates, social costs within the state of Florida are $7 billion annually. And whereas the educating and the public about how problem gambling affects everyone in the community, including youth, older adults, and families, is essential if we are able to, if we are too proactive about the problem. And whereas the Florida Council on Compulsive Gambling 2020, PGAM campaign, problem gambling keeps you from your goals, provides an opportunity for the public, policymakers, educators, businesses, mental health providers, criminal justice professionals, the gaming industry, and others to make known the adverse effects of problem gambling, as well as available treatment. And whereas any individual, professional organization dedicated to assisting those in need can participate in raising awareness and treating problem gambling by promoting the statewide 24-hour confidential multi, multilingual help line, 888-ADMITIT. Now therefore, I, Robert Hoag, mayor of the City of Cape Canaveral, Brevard County, Florida, do hereby proclaim the month of March 2020 as Problem Gambling Awareness Month. Sign and seal 18th February 2020, Robert Hoag, Mayor.
Why don't you all come up with Nick, please? The whole council?
I think the page is signed.
Yep, yep. It's all, y'all are included. Okay, I have the other presentation, is by AARP of Florida, the advocacy outreach, Ms. Ingrid Collins. Welcome.
Thank you.
I'm here with the council.
Yes, thank you.
You have the floor, ma'am. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Good evening, mayor, and council members. Thank you so much for having me here today. My name is Ingrid Collins. I'm the Associate State Director for Community Engagement in Central Florida, and I'm here representing AARP of Florida to talk to you about this age-friendly initiative. Next slide, please. So as we see here, for those of you who may not be familiar with what we mean by age-friendly communities, basically focusing on active aging, which of course, AARP is going to be all about that, and also creating those supportive and physical environments that help people age in place. And really, what we like to say is that what's good for an 80-year-old is also good for an eight-year-old. So it's really about the communities that we share. Next slide. Here in Cape Canaveral, this pyramid shows population 2019, and as you can see, median age being 57.2, it is really top-heavy. There are currently more older adults in comparison to younger adults in this, in this area. And this is why this is important, and this is why we talk about making communities friendly for all. Next slide. On this slide, you see a map of the United States. Each red dot shows communities that have joined the national age-friendly communities. And we also have a handful of states that are part of this. So not only do cities join, but sometimes it's a county, sometimes in rare, less than a handful of cases, it's actually a state level. So we see that communities, large and small, are joining this network. And what that means is that elected leaders are making a commitment, that they want to actively work towards making the town, city, county, or even state a great place for people of all ages. In the next slide, you'll see all of the Florida communities. I highlighted Cape Canaveral in red, and also bolded the state of Florida, because again, it's only the fourth state in the entire country to be designated as age-friendly, thanks to a proclamation by Governor DeSantis in April of last year. Next slide, please. So what makes a community a great place to live? In the process of developing this whole initiative, the World Health Organization asked people around the entire world, what would it take to help you thrive in your community? These eight domains of livability are what resulted in, as part of those responses. So these are the aspects of the community that people say they want, and they have identified these as the things that will help them maintain their activity level and age in place. The interesting thing, too, is that we're currently seeing that what older people want is also what millennials want. So again, it's not about just older people, it's not about them or somebody else, it's about all of us. Next slide, please. So here is the process. We also want to note that for Cape Canaveral, the action plan that was submitted was, was so impressive. It was far above and beyond, within this five-year process, basically like jumped a step because the plan was so comprehensive. So we want to say a special thank you to your city planner, Brenda Defoe Suprenant, for the wonderful work and collaboration. So this five-year process, right now, Cape Canaveral is in the implementation stage because your action plan has already been submitted, approved, and as I said, was very impressive. So we're here today to recognize City of Cape Canaveral for completing your action plan, for the Resilient Cape Canaveral Action Plan 2020, and successfully moving on to the next phase. So with me today is one of my superstar volunteers from right here in Brevard County, Phil Catchline, with the fine award that we'd like to present to you today.
Brenda? Come on, Brenda?
Oh, yes.
Brenda, come on, come on.
It's all her, huh?
No. You wanna get right in the middle and move over and let Brenda stand right here? And present it to Brenda, please. Brenda, Brenda did all the work. We're just here to help her.
You didn't need to do anything.
Thank you, sure. Right here?
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Fine, thank you.
Thank you.
And I just wanted to give a shout-out to Zach also, because he had a big hand in this as well.
Thank you. Thank you very much. All right, you're welcome.
We love you. We love City of Canaveral. But my-
You're welcome.
That's great. I- Good job. Thank you for having me.
Good luck. Thank you.
I want a copy of this.
We're not ready for you yet. Come on up, Doug, come on.
Doug Gilliken from Jane Moore &amp; Company. He's gonna do the annual audit, financial statement. Good evening, Doug. I've seen you for a while.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and good evening, everyone. As the mayor said, Doug Gilliken, I'm the audit manager on the engagement. Zach Schalfor, partner on the engagement. He didn't tell me until this morning that I was gonna be speaking, so hopefully it goes well. If it does, it was my idea. If it doesn't, it was his problem. First and foremost, just want to say thank you to council for allowing us to continue serving as the external auditors. It's been a few years now, and we really relish the opportunity to be up here. So just want to start off, looking, you know, back to last year's CAFR. This is a certificate of achievement for excellence in financial reporting issued by the Government Finance Officers Association for the 2018 CAFR. We had to look into the transmittal letter. It's been awarded to the city 24 years in a row now. Speaks volumes to the work that staff does, so want to say thank you to John and his department for all that they do in putting together this light and breezy reading document that you have in front of you. We expect, based on the process this year, that the city will receive this certificate for the 2019 CAFR as well. So the actual CAFR itself is the city's financial statements. It's the city's document. As the auditors, we are responsible only for the five reports you see on the screen right now. So the first one, the audit report at the beginning of the document, this is the main audit report over the financial statements as a whole. We did issue an unmodified opinion or a clean audit report. It's the highest mark that we can give, that the financial statements are in material respects in compliance with any and all audit standards. The second report there, the single audit report, if the city spends over so much in grant funding, we do an extra detailed testing of those grant funds. You didn't have any federal awards, but you had some state awards, get over that threshold. And again, a clean audit report, no findings, no issues, no concerns there. The third report, internal control and compliance report, that's related to the government auditing standards. Again, just extra scrutiny based on the level of, from the government auditing standards. Again, no findings or comments there, no concerns related to control or non-compliance, any issues like that. The fourth report is from the auditor general. If it doesn't really meet the criteria to fit into those first three reports, it'll fall to the auditor general management report. Here, we had two comments in the prior year that were resolved this year, and no new comments to report as well. The fifth report, the examination report, basically requires us to look at your compliance with investment policies per state statute. Again, no issues or comments, no non-compliance to speak of there. And just a little bit on the numbers, you know, this is going back to 9/30/2019, so these numbers are a few months old. But just to give you a little perspective of where the city was at, at that point in time, so we're looking at the general fund. Your fund balance are basically the net assets, after your assets minus your liabilities, gets put into these five buckets. So your non-spending amounts are any items that the cash has already gone out the door for prepaid expenses or inventories. The restricted line item is any monies that are restricted from an external source, so the $612,000 is mostly due to your debt service payments. The committed bucket is any monies that are restricted but from an internal source, so usually ordinance or some resolutions. A bulk of that $6 million is related to the monies for the generation, multi-generational center. The assigned bucket is any monies that are basically available but have been earmarked by council, and the $1.2 million there is money set aside for FY '20. And then finally, unassigned, that's really the residual fund balance if it's not spoken for in any of the four previous buckets. And if you take the two bottom ones, assigned and unassigned, on the next slide, just to kind of put the numbers in perspective for you, so you take the $4.7 million of these assigned and unassigned compared to your current expenditures and transfers out, gets you to about 38.8% in reserve ratio. You have the prior year number there at 34.1, but really, the GFOA, the ones that issue the certificates, say that you should have at least two months, or about 16.7% of your recurring expenditures in reserves, and so you can see that the city is well above that number. Just keep in mind, though, that, you know, as a coastal community, you know, on a barrier- You have the prior year number there at 34.1, but really the GFOA, the ones that issue the certificates, say that you should have at least two months, or about 16.7% of your recurring expenditures in reserves. And so you can see that the city is well above that number. Just keep in mind, though, that, you know, as a coastal community, you know, on a barrier island, that 16.7 is, you know, a bare minimum for a city that, you know, lives in a bubble and doesn't have to deal with natural disasters or anything like that. So while the 38.8% is above that mark, you know, it's still a very good place to be. Just real quickly on the CRA fund, you know, as a restricted fund in and of itself, we thought it would be good to just point out some items here. So again, at 9/30/2019, the total fund balance of $44,000. If you look on that balance sheet, all those monies are restricted. A three-year trend of the revenues over those periods, you can see the rapid increase from the dollar amounts contributed by the city and matched by the county. The expenditures, a little over $300,000 spent by the fund itself, and then $680,000 spent by other funds through the CRA that they are now paying back. And just to let council aware, we did do a separate examination report just on the CRA fund itself. We basically went through 100% of the expenditures to make sure that they were in compliance with state statute, the inter-local agreement with the county, and the city's internal policies, and again, didn't find any issues there. So that's all I have. Thank you again. You know, it was great to sit down with you guys today and really dig through this CAFER, and hopefully we will be up here again next year.
Anybody have any questions? Doug Willie's here. Y'all met with him today, I'm sure. Great job. You guys are good. Thanks.
Thanks, sir.
Appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Thank John and his staff for all the—
Just a comment. This is, this audit, this is extraordinary for this city. And we couldn't have done it without the fantastic financial staff, Cheryl Palio and Candace Lake, and my deputy back here, Melinda Huser, who just was just relentless in ensuring that our accounting was just exactly where it had to be. So to my whole staff, I'm really, really, this is just an exceptional effort. And to all the support for the rest of the staff, for the city, that came up and supported us, it's an extraordinary effort, and I feel proud to be a member of this team. Thank you.
And I'm very proud of John and his team. It's amazing to have a flawless audit, no comments, all pro, your comments have been addressed. Congratulations, John.
Yes.
Doug and Zach, thank you for your time and efforts. Appreciate it. Look forward to seeing you. Usually you don't look forward to seeing these guys, but these guys, we look forward to seeing them because they're really good. Thanks. Thanks for your effort, Ben. Thanks.
I'd like to say congratulations to John and his staff, and to Doug and Zach, and thank you for answering all of my questions that I had today when I had my meeting with you. And you've done an excellent job, and you did a great job tonight, two presenting. Thank you very much.
All right. We'll move on to consent agenda, or no, we got an interview with the applicant. We didn't quite finish yet with the presentations and so forth. Excuse me. And Gentico, I guess is, they are. Would you come forward, please, and Mr. Garganese will do the honors.
Okay. Raise your right hand, and frank, tell the whole truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God, and all the information in your application is true and correct to the best of your knowledge.
It is.
All right. Please explain to the council why you would like to serve on the board.
Well, it started with my going to a meeting when they were interviewing folks for candidates for the city council, and somebody mentioned that they were bringing back the advisory boards and trying to re-staff. And I've been a volunteer at the hospital, and I really firmly believe we should be doing that. And I thought, well, I could perhaps contribute in some way. I'm retired from the space center. I have 35 years in project management. I've lived, we landed here when we moved from up north in 1977, and we lived here for a couple of years, and then went over to Merritt Island. And then in '98, I moved back, and I've stayed here ever since. I love the city. I think there's been wonderful changes since 1977, and I'm hoping that I can contribute something.
Start down on the end, down there, if you want to ask—
Hi. Hi. Thank you for volunteering to do this. I see that you started your application in October, so thank you for your patience on getting to where you are now. And I just wanted to ask you, what is your vision that you see in the future for Cape Canaveral? What do you see that we need or we need to work on?
I'd like us to remain more family-friendly. I live in Ocean Woods, and we do have a lot of rentals there, and that's fine. Most of those folks, I have wonderful rent people that are renting. But I just would like to see us not go all commercial. I knew, I know the new thing they're planning on Central is going to be stores underneath and then living above, and I think that's great. I like that we're doing more recreational stuff for the kids. When my boy was here in the late '90s and 2000, all we had was a trailer on a lot, not much supervision. And I used to man the baseball field, you know what I mean? We really didn't get a lot of help. The kids didn't get much. And they all did fine, you know, but I like that approach more than going very commercial. I just hate seeing another strip mall or a gas station.
Yes. Well, thank you, and welcome.
I hope, yeah.
Thank you very much, and I think that you will be a great addition.
Thank you.
I have no questions. I just want to thank you as well for serving, taking time to do this, and give back to our community. Thank you.
Thank you. You always get more when you volunteer. I learned that at the hospital.
Yeah, thank you very much. Just glad to hear that you have an interest in recreation, know how important that is to the city. I do appreciate all the work that you do at Cape Canaveral. Volunteering your time is awesome. Thank you. I'd just like to welcome you, and thank you for volunteering. Appreciate it. I'm sure it will benefit everybody. Okay, thank you very much. Did you have anything you wanted to add?
No, I—
Okay.
Thank you.
Just stick around, we'll take care of it in a minute.
All right.
All right, then we go into our consent agenda. And we have a motion, or you were pulling seven, correct? Okay, Mr. Morrison pulled item number seven. Anybody else? Any others? We'll look for a motion to approve one through six.
Mr. Mayor, I believe that we approve items one through six on the consent agenda.
And I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion to approve items one through six on the consent agenda. Would you call the roll, please?
Mayor Proton Brown?
Four.
Mayor Hoag?
Four.
Councilmember Kellum?
Four.
Councilmember Morrison?
Four.
Councilmember Raymond?
Four.
All right, item number seven has been pulled by Mr. Morrison. You have the floor, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This item is to award a bid for the mowing and landscaping maintenance to the U.S. lawns of Rockledge, Florida, in the amount of $190,000. Currently, we have been kind of an in-between stage, for lack of better words, in working with a contractor. And I appreciate the time that our interim city manager, Todd, and John, spent to help understand this one. Overall, I feel like the staff is moving in the right direction on this, and I, my biggest concern that I wanted to talk with council and staff about was that the amount here does exceed what we're typically used to paying here and budgeting in the past. And I think that if I did the math correctly, the current rate does not encompass all of this, I guess, from John's report. And please jump in here, Todd, if I'm missing anything, but I believe we were around $15,000 a month in the past.
Correct.
And right now, we might be paying around $5,000, but falls beneath, I think, the service level that we need. And we've all seen some of the challenges we went through, inconsistencies.
Correct.
Thank you. And so at this rate, this is a seven-month contract. I like that a lot, opposed to the 12-month, gives us a little bit more flexibility, but at $27,000 for one month, compared to the current rate, that's like five and a half months' worth. So in this first month, when we pay out the $27,000 under the current operation, we would get five and a half months' worth. My question is, could we hold for one month, especially before the rain hits and the weeds and everything starts growing in grass, pursue what I already understand, or some other avenues, as we read in the report here, to obtain our own lawn equipment and see cost benefits, if that's really worth it, in partnering with the county, the sheriff's department on that side? But if we delayed for one month, we would save the $27,000. We'd pay out, I guess, $5,000, and buy enough front room, I think, to get this research done, to see if it's worth it. I feel that that would be the right move, because what I don't want to do is move forward here and find ourselves, you know, down the road, realizing we could have just moved a lot quicker with the contract. And so if we delay a month, we start in, just say it's April, and we realize that it's worth it for us to go another avenue, we can immediately take advantage of the 30-day notice. We have to notify them in 30 days, and I believe we would have 60 days paid out. And so we would pay out roughly $54,000. So what I'm saying is, we would move forward with this contract, just like we want to do today, but we would start it one month later, and that would allow us to save a substantial amount of money and take action with another avenue, fast. That was it. That's what I wanted to talk to council about. My concerns on doing that is, if we, you know, what's the worst thing that happens? If we don't take action today, is the current service provider, you know, are we going to see some major problems there? I certainly don't want that either. But because this came in much higher than I think we're used to budgeting, not pulling strong in one direction, just wanted to see if council had any thoughts on it, looking for some ideas, and maybe taking advantage of a 30-day delay to save, I think, a substantial amount of money. So that's my comments, and, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
I'm going to let the other council speak first. Go ahead, Mickey, did you have anything?
Yes, I just was, the 30 days, Wes, what would you think that we would, what would be different in 30 days from now than, I mean, would it be, would they have more? I think that the city is moving to buy equipment and hire the sheriff's department. What do you think would be the reason to wait 30 days? Because we can do it for $5,000 for the next 30 days and then make a decision? Is that what, I'm just trying to figure out what—
Yeah, that would be the best-case scenario, is if we only pay out $5,000 under the current service provider, we do not move forward with this contract because we find out that moving forward with the option of acquiring, procuring our own equipment and bringing that in-house, and we avoid the $27,000 altogether. That would, I would say, yes, best-case scenario. Next best would be 30 days, we know, we move, we have the information to know whether it's worth it or not, and we're able to lock in, notify them that we want to just move forward, maybe a 60-day term, or only do a 30-day, opposed to, I guess, Plan C, is if we move forward today, we are going to be paying out and then be in potentially for a minimum of 60 days. I don't know how all the timing would work out, but I would be leaning towards option A, to where we could avoid it altogether, if possible. That's what we would accomplish today.
Okay. My other question is, and maybe Todd could answer, is if we did that, and we didn't award this, and went with the $5,000, could we spend the $190,000 in the next 30 days buying equipment to save that money?
I think the first question I have is, are we violating the bid terms if we change it at this point?
Oh.
That'd be one of my questions, what we're going to ask.
Oh, okay.
Another thing, I got, if you're going to wait 30 days, you're going to have 10,000 phone calls.
Right.
Because we went through this before, when other people walked off the job on us, basically. So I don't want to go through that again. I don't know what your solution would be to that. You got a lawnmower? You go out and—
[laughing]
We had tons of emails and phone calls over a period of probably two and a half, three weeks, that the medians were growed up, eight, 10 inches high, and waiting a month is impossible. We can't do it. We can't do it. I've already, I looked at the medians today, they already need mowing on Canaveral Beach Boulevard, Central, down through that area.
I 100% agree with that. I'm not suggesting we don't cut for 30 days. My assumption is that we could continue with the current service provider for 30 days.
Well, that's over, Wes.
Is that possible, Todd?
Isn't—
Todd, aren't we— After today's meeting, they're no longer going to be a service in the city.
And aren't we having, I actually made a couple of calls to the city, and we were having issues already with the current builder. So why would we give them another month when they can't comply?
Like Jim said, they're done as of today. They're done. They're not here no more. So I'm, I'm, I'm all for the idea of doing it ourselves, in-house, subcontracting it out to a dependable person, because we've been, I guess, since I've been here, we've probably had 10 different landscape people over my periods. It just seems like they come in and they go, and they come in and they go. Some of them you get once in a while, they're good. But this last go-around was enough to teach me, you don't want to wait. Two weeks, especially, the grass is already needing attention. So I think it's, this is, we're bound for seven months?
No, we have a 30-day termination provision at any time during this contract term. And I think perhaps our focus could more appropriately be on trying to get that internal cost for us to do it internally sooner, and take the money off of the back end of this.
I think, Todd, I ask you, I just can't believe that a contract this big, that only, is the issue that the five years that you're asking people to be reputable to, because only have three people apply for a contract like this, is, I just couldn't understand.
You want to speak to that, Jim or Jeff?
Yes. Well, we went, we went through the bid process, and that's all we got were, you know, three responses. It was advertised for over a month.
Right.
We asked you a question. Are you through, Jim?
Yeah.
I mean, Mike?
Yeah.
Jeff, whoever wants to answer. The lawn equipment, you've already, I'm assuming, you've been looking at this and getting costs put together?
Yes, sir.
Are you to a point where you can say that it's put together? Are you still putting prices together?
We have one more item to price out, and we'll have the whole package together.
And in your view, knowing you guys as well as I know you, in your view, do you feel that what we're going to get into that would be feasible for the city to do this?
If it works out with the inmate crew, it would work out great. But if the inmate crew does not work out, then it's going to want to cost the city a lot more money.
Yeah, right.
Because you'll have to, you have five more employees, more equipment.
That's what I'm looking at, but the inmate crews are going to be selected by, of course, the president, or people that are trustees or whatever, but—
The lawn equipment, you've already, I'm assuming, you've been looking at this and getting costs put together?
Yes, sir.
Are you to a point where you can say that it's put together? Or are you still putting prices together?
We have one more item to price out, and we'll have the whole package together.
And in your view, knowing you guys as well as I know you, in your view, do you feel that what we're going to get into, that would be feasible for the city to do this?
If it works out with the inmate crew, it will work out great. But if the inmate crew does not work out, then it's gonna want to cost in the city a lot more money.
Yeah, right.
Because you'll have to, you have five more employees, more equipment.
That's what I'm looking at, but the inmate crews are, are gonna be selected by, of course, the president, or people that are trustees or whatever. But do you feel that we will get the ample service out of the inmate crews at our, at our need?
That we don't know until we happy have them and start working them. That's when we'll be able to determine whether or not it's gonna work or not. We're at the mercy of what they send us.
And talking with Todd on this, when I talked with Todd, you told me that there was already, they were already doing this out in the...
There are other places that contract for this current...
And we had talked with them, and we would model our service off of some of those other cities who do this.
Correct. Yeah, Orlando does it. There's quite a few cities that does it.
But what about here, before...
Cocoa City, Rockledge does it.
They use inmate crews in Rockledge?
Right. They do all of US One and Barton.
I'm, I'm tired of seeing, I'm tired of seeing our landscape people just come and go, come and go, seems like every five years or... One time, we had somebody for 10 years, and he was an Italian guy, I don't remember the name of that group, but I think we had, remember Jeff, who...
Yeah, it was Nix.
What was his name?
Nix Lawn Service.
Nix, yeah, right. They were probably the longest in history that I can recall. But it's, it's a, it's like a, it's like a crap game. It's like every five years or four years, it changes. And they don't seem to be very reliable the last couple of go-arounds. So I'm all for doing it. I mean, it's gonna cost you, yeah, but I'd rather have it costing, listen to the phone calls, and look at emails that we got. But I don't know about you guys, but I got 100...
I agree.
I just was wondering, have you already applied for the group from the sheriff's department?
From the state.
Oh, it's from the state?
It's from the state. What it does, you have to, you have to contact them, and they have a, a contract team that will, if you need five people with one supervisor, then they'll give you a contract price for a year, for five people and one supervisor, with you having to provide them with a vehicle to transport the prisoners.
All right. Now, who, who is already working on some of our parks? Because I see the people out at Center Street Park.
Correct. The city already has one crew, inmate crew, that works.
And they work hard, I'll tell you. I have watched them from my, from my balcony, and they are working hard.
So in our, in our endeavor here, we would be purchasing a new vehicle, new trailer, new lawn equipment, and our contract with, with this other service would be an open-ended, we can terminate that at any...
We can terminate it anytime within the seven-month...
...any.
We would be hiring a maintenance person on staff to take care of the equipment, change the oil, sharpen the blades.
The other thing, when we contract with the sheriff's department or the state, after, do you make a contract for a year, for example, and then you can stop that contract after a year?
That's one of the, that's what we're trying to get the wording in that contract, and that's what we're waiting on from the state.
All right. So if we aren't satisfied, then we have another crack at it next year.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question. What, what if we buy all the equipment and the vehicle and all that, and then the sheriff's department doesn't work out? What happens then?
Then the city will have to put on their own crew. They would have to hire, hire staff.
Right, a whole lawn staff, wow.
Or we can have a garage sale and resell the equipment.
I'm comfortable with the sheriff's office coming in at a later date, but I think we need to get somebody on board to take care of the immediate situations that we have right now. I have observed quite a few places where it's phone call time and email time, so it's getting to where we need to do it. And I think there's a couple of things that we can, between what I've talked with Todd about, and get...
We'll try to expedite this, for sure.
I have one other comment. We have US Lawns at Salon on the River, and what we have found is that we have a landscape chairman, and she stays on their backs. So they do, they do need to be supervised.
Is that you in?
No, it is not me. Thank you. I have enough on my plate. But there's a lady named Dolores, and she does a great job. But I just, just a warning that you really have to stay on, on it. And they just need a little push. Thank you.
Thank you, and I, I agree, knowing now that continuing as is is not an option. One question on altering the agreement we move forward, can we take one of the bid areas out and run a test with a crew? Say, one of the locations, would that breach the contract? Do we have the right to?
We don't have access to the inmates until we sign a contract with them to do, is that what you're saying to...
What I'm saying is, we move forward this, but say, we come back to US Lawns, and we say, hey, we want to remove Canaveral City Park, or Manatee Park, as a bid area from the contract, you're no longer responsible for that. And then we test out this crew on a particular portion of the city, so we don't get in these situations that we're talking about, and all or nothing, kind of do a hybrid approach. If that's an option, I think in the contract, that's good for us. But at the end of the, you know, if you have 30 days to end the whole thing, maybe it's 30 days to alter it. That's what I'm really asking, saying, we don't want to cancel the whole thing, we just want to alter a piece of it.
You're talking about taking out some portion of the contract with US Lawns?
I'm saying...
That's gonna, that's gonna create a problem as far as going back out for a...
Oh, no, I don't want to change the contract today. I'm asking, in the contract, do we have the ability to, to do that? We get 60 days down the road, and we say...
You're not, you can change anything you want in the contract, but what about the monies? That's gonna have to be a change to you, for you to benefit, and I don't think they're gonna be too adverse to go along with that.
Well, if you're US Lawns, and I say, hey, we're giving you 30 days' notice to cancel the whole contract, or we're giving you 30 days' notice, we no longer want this portion, we don't, we won't want you to be responsible for Canaveral City Park. So we gravel an area that they no longer need to, does the contract allow us to omit a section in, of it? If it does, my recommendation is, if the time is right, to take advantage of that, buy enough, you know, test out.
But we're going into a total new, different contract with a totally different new country, company.
I understand.
And, and you're gonna tell Down to Earth that you're gonna take out the cream out of the crop, basically, and then want them to do something for that less amount of money?
No, I'm, Todd, am I making sense to you?
I think what you're, what you're saying is, you would like to travel this road a little bit with US Lawns, and then at an appropriate time, request that they allow us to service one area in exchange for a reduction on that month's bill.
I'm asking, does the contract allow us to do that?
And I, and I would say, I don't know. I think we can ask them anything that we want.
Yeah, I don't know how you bid out, if you would, you put the contract in the bid document or not. But, I mean, it's a, it's a line item contract, based on, you know, the various landscape areas, and each landscape area has an associated total cost to the contract, right? So you can always modify a contract. We could try and make sure that there's a provision in there, and not only does the, does the city have the right to terminate within 30 days, but the city has the ability to adjust the landscape areas. And if you remove a landscape area, then I would think there would be an, an associated adjustment in the cost based on the line items in their bid that are in the agenda item. Does that make sense?
I'm saying, but you're the contractor, if I come through and...
But, but you could, so the city...
I worked on a bid with all your specified items, and you're gonna come around at the last minute and change it on me, and then have somebody else over here doing that, and I think I just tell you, don't worry about my contract.
This contract's been signed already?
No.
Is that, it hasn't been signed yet?
Well, I think, isn't the inmates doing Center Street Park?
Yes, they do. And they, they do some other areas of the city, too, actually.
So is that Center Street Park in this line item?
Yes, it's in, Center Street Park and Streetscape is item L under landscape areas.
So I, with Councilman Morrison, I, I understand what he's saying is, if we give the prisoners a chance to do a certain area and see how it works out, they're already doing Center Street. Why are we gonna pay this company to do that as well?
They do. They've stayed there some...
You need something done immediately, as far as the care right now.
Right, I understand.
Getting the prisoners under contract's gonna take probably a couple of weeks, three weeks, or whatever, but you need at least one or two months of service, maybe, depending on how much time it takes to get equipment together, get all the contract with the state worked out, buy an equipment, and they're not there quite yet. So you're looking maybe at a couple of months before they would come on board. And then trying to get them for just a, a work, come in and do just this for, I think you're kind of mixing apples and oranges in it. And as contractors, I mean, you're, you're taking work away from them that you already told them to give you a price on, and then you want to do that, I think you'll probably get your contract handed, tell you, and they'll just walk. But that's no way to do, you, you're, you know what I'm saying.
And I, and not only do I, I agree with you, and understand, I think we should move forward with it as written. The way the contract's written today, we can give them 30 days' notice and walk away from the whole thing. And I think I've heard enough to hear that...
That's what I want.
My hope is that we'll have another opportunity if we want to amend this, or look at this program, working with the state. Just, you know, it's not like when we move forward today, it's not gonna come back or be communicated, so I'm in favor of, of moving forward with this. Thank you.
I just have one other question. I noticed that the palm tree trimming is in this contract, and I thought we were doing that ourselves.
No.
Who, who was doing the palm tree trimming?
Down to Earth was doing it when they were...
Down to, okay. I thought that we were doing that ourselves, in-house. Okay, thank you.
Do a little trimming here and there, but not, not all the trees.
A large amount of it.
I know. It's very expensive.
Okay, anybody else want to bring anything else out on this? But I think we need a motion to get it moving, and let these guys put the package together and bring it back.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we award the bid for mowing and landscaping maintenance to US Lawns of Rockledge, Florida, in the amount of $190,043 to authorize the interim city manager to execute mowing and landscaping agreement for the same.
Need a second?
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to accept the contract with the landscaping for, Down to Earth, for $190,000, plus whatever it was, $43. Do we call the roll place?
Mayor Proton Brown?
Or.
Mayor Hoag?
Or.
Councilmember Kellum?
Four.
Councilmember Morrison?
Four.
Councilmember Reiman?
Or.
Item number eight, ordinance number 01-2020, amending the city's code to establish locational design and operational requirements. Second reading. Mr. Gargen, you can...
Okay, ordinance 01-2020, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Cape Canaveral, Babel County, Florida, amending the city code to establish locational design and operational requirements for self-service storage facilities within the city, adopting conforming amendments to the zoning code, including revisions, oh, sorry, revising definitions and existing storage regulations, providing for the repeal of prior inconsistent ordinances and resolutions, incorporation into the code, severability and an effective date. This is second and final reading of this ordinance. If you recall, during first reading, the ordinance did include a provision to allow the storage facilities within the C2 zoning district as a conditional use, based on the council's direction. That was removed from the ordinance. So as currently written and proposed for second reading, this ordinance would establish design and locate, and design requirements and operational requirements for self-storage facilities within the M1 zoning district only. Those facilities are currently allowed in the M1 zoning district. Further, there were a few other little, well, actually, one other minor change to the ordinance. You will note that we actually have pictures in the ordinance to basically add a form-based provision to the code. If you recall, we had some discussion during first reading that the new design standard, that design standards would require these mini self-storage structures to be designed to emulate an office building. Pictures worth a thousand words. The modern trend for these storage facilities are as depicted in some of the demonstrative pictures that are incorporated into the ordinance. Be happy to answer any additional questions you may have.
I had a couple of questions, and I don't, I was talking to Todd and Mr. Dickey, and I was wondering, the C2 zoning and the right to have many storage in the C2. I would like to talk about that for a minute. I know we decided to take it out, but, you know, for buildings like this, in, I think it would be something that would improve, especially there on Center Street, the look of that area. And I wondered if, instead of a special exemption, if we could do it for that property as a permitted...
I read this, I misread this.
...structure. And I'm not sure really how that worked. And, you know, a lot, a lot of people are against special exemptions, but they also work good for the city sometimes, like Cumberland Farms and Atlantic Animal Hospital, which improved the look of our city. So I just wanted to bring that up again and see if it went anywhere. And I think if we do, if we let these buildings in the C2 area, it would give people a reason to revitalize or rehab their properties. That's just my opinion. I just thought I'd bring it up for discussion.
I'll reiterate, I don't think that we need to have storage units in the C2 district. I think they belong in the M1. That's the reason why we have a zoning map for the city, and I think we should stick to it. As we talked about at the last meeting, we said that storage units might look very nice to begin with, but they don't. And this is way too close to residential property. And Center Street is not that big of a street. There are people speeding already, it's 25-mile zone. There are people that go 40 miles per hour down there, and I don't think we need the excess traffic there, since we have 80 units at the end of the street and a park. And I think that it really is a poor choice to try to put this into an area that is so close to residential area. There are children, there are bike riders, there are pedestrians up and down Center Street. It doesn't belong there. These storage units belong in the M1 district. Thank you.
Mr. Morrison, you got it. So Mickey, if I understand, Councilmember Kellum is, you're, tonight, we're voting on the changes, which is to approve the, approve the improved design standards for M1. But a lot of the concern, the mayor, and we had spoke about last time, in regards to special exceptions, you're, you're saying, what if we did permitted use by right? Just that, no special exception in the C2 zone?
Yes.
And so this, I guess, would be more for a future conversation, right? Because tonight, we wouldn't, we haven't advertised for that, we'd have to bring that back around.
I think the council's free to discuss that, the way the title of the ordinance is worded. The ordinance is to establish locational design and operational requirements for these facilities. So, you know, it's ripe for a discussion, if that's what, what the council wants to do regarding that issue, in the same manner that the council discussed removing it. I think you asked a question, Councilman, in the last meeting, could we bring it back up to discuss in the C2 at the, at this meeting? And I said, you, it would be within council's right to bring that up before you take a final vote on the ordinance.
Thank you. And Councilman Kellum, are you saying, you would, you want to hear feedback, or are you saying you would support that?
Well, I would support that, and I would like feedback from the other council members. I just think that for that area, and the C2 area is also in the, and I'm learning, EEOD area, which is another layer of protection and... EOD area, which is another layer of protection and making sure that things look nice and are presentable. So between the language in this ordinance and the EOD overlay, I think it would be an asset to our city. And if we couldn't do it by special exception, maybe do it for permitted. And the area that, you know, this ordinance, I know it's not about this specific spot, but if you take a picture of what's there now and what could be there, I think it would really make that street look a lot better.
But that's not the point. The point of it is that if it's allowed by permit in C2, C2 is along North Atlantic, where we're just starting to see some improvement from the port, making our city, as you enter, look good. I mean, if we do it for one, we're gonna have to do it for another. So if you're saying by permit, that's a problem. I think it belongs in the M1. I don't think that we want to destroy the progress that we've made. I mean, it's starting to look a lot better on A1A, and I think we just wanna continue that progress.
My final comment, and I won't say anything else on this, I moved last time to support allowing it, and I would support it again. That's my input. I believe that these are, and thank you very much for putting the design, the picture is worth a thousand words. Those would be enhancements to the C2 district. I'm not concerned about these types of buildings being next to residential buildings. In fact, I think it would be a convenience that if you were able, you wanna talk about affordable housing, you can buy a smaller home now and live next to these conveniently and store your extra belongings, or have your mother-in-law move in, or whatever your story is. That these allow families to wanna, to move here who have extra things, but also not need that giant garage and extra storage space. And I think that this is a way for us to address these problems that are big in Brevard County. Storage, if Cape Canaveral can make the C2 district this aesthetically nice, and I have confidence in our staff that they'll help guide that through the process, that this would be an enhancement. Because we do have these storage units in the C2 district today. They did not have to abide by these design standards, and if they did, I think that, you know, these are quality. And the idea of, you know, tapping into mixed use in the EOD overlay district and being able to think about storage on the top, you know, things on the bottom, that, you know, restaurants, boutiques, residential, potentially paired up with hybrid storage, there's a lot. But when we pin them all in the M1 district, that really, you know, says, hey, you're an industrial. I don't really think of indoor self-storage as an industrial use. I think of it's, you know, air-conditioned, that where you store your belongings, your important items, maybe it's that nice piano you inherited, maybe it's keepsakes, things that you don't want to be over next to, you know, industrial uses. So I get it. I understand the concerns we heard, and I certainly understand, Councilmember Raymond, you know, being that this particular example, even though this is across-the-board zoning issue by her street. If you look at the old outdoor zonings, and you saw some of the activities, and people running businesses out of them, and sleeping, and whatever that is, I understand that. That's not what we have before us today. We've got something that really raises the bar, and it is nice and would be an asset. So I agree with you. Councilmember Kellum, and I think permitted use by right. I think the mayor made it clear that special exception, basically, that's what it is. It's the same thing that, and so I would support it. Thank you.
I just have two more things to say, and then I'll be quiet. In the C2 zone, when I looked it up, it says that automobile service stations would be allowed there, trucking companies would be allowed there. I think as far as a residential area, I would rather have something that looks like this next to a residential area than a truck-driving school or a service station. I think that, I understand the, Mayor Hoag feels about special exemptions, but I think we need to think forward, and I think between this ordinance and the EOD, that we've learned from the mistakes in the past, and that we need to move forward with nice-looking buildings like this. And that's all I have to say.
Regardless, a storage unit is a storage unit is a storage unit. Storage units are problems. I don't care if they look like the Ritz-Carlton. They're still a storage unit, and there are always problems with these storage units. And I have plenty of friends who have had things tuned by rodents, whatever, and all kinds of things happening in a storage unit. I don't care if it's air-conditioned, I don't care what it is, and I don't care if it looks like the Ritz-Carlton. It's still a storage unit.
I would be willing to say that majority of the citizens in Cape Canaveral wouldn't be getting excited about having a storage unit built next to them. I understand it is aesthetically beautiful, and we don't have any, I know the city has guidelines, but there's nothing to say that it's gonna be built like these pictures indicate.
Well, that's what the code's for.
Yeah, but I understand what you're saying, but there's nothing to say that it's gonna be built as nice-looking as what we have here. And I'm not excited about it. I don't want any more, at this time, I don't want any more exceptions, and I will not vote on it.
Also, it has to have enough land around it. It requires a certain amount of land.
Mr. Mayor, if I can just, I think that what Councilmember Kellum brought up is to get away from special exceptions, and when you read these design standards, Mayor Proton Brown, wherever you feel that there is a weakness or lacking, and I thought you brought up some good points last time in regards to, well, how do you define, you know, the broad word? This is the opportunity for us to make those improvements. And so whatever adjectives that we wanna add in, that's our core job. That's why we were elected to do this. And so if, when you read here, thank you for getting this up, you know, it's gonna go through, you know, the special exception, if done right, was the first set of teeth, if you will, to make sure that it's not a one-come-one-come-all. The second one was, you know, compatibility and harmony here, that the literal words are addressing it, that these words didn't exist for storage units prior. And so I think staff worked hard to get this here, and it says things, metal composite materials with finished brick, brick veneer stone, stimulated stone, stucco, cement, fiberboard, concrete masonry, integrated color provided, the outer surface is either split-faced or ground-faced. I mean, we can continue to enhance this, and I, I'm willing to work through this with you, too, 'cause I am a big fan of being explicit, and I do agree with you, Mayor Proton Brown, that people will take advantage of, you know, open spaces. But through the community appearance board, through the special exception, through these words, being in the EOD, I mean, golly, you couldn't ask for a more rigorous process. And I wouldn't say it's quite business-friendly. It's pretty, pretty strong in making a statement on what we're trying to do here. And the fact that we're adding, correct me if I'm wrong, a picture into the actual ordinances, I mean, that is very strong statement. And so I feel like we can get there, but I hear ya, and I don't disagree with ya.
Anybody else? Other comments? We go to public participation. I don't have any comments. Anybody would like to speak on this item? It's in reference to a storage unit in a unit or in an area in a C2 zoning, that this one in particular that would come to us is on Center Street, behind NSYNC, in that area, going down towards the river. And bearing in mind, the C2 area is in other locations throughout the city. So if we allow warehouses in C2 district, you're gonna see them on the C2 districts. And there's plenty of warehouses in the city already, I think, personally. And you can build something, and 25, 30 years later, if it's not taken care of, it could be falling apart. It can be beautiful when you build it. The original warehouses were pretty when they built them. There's some in there that look attractive.
May I ask you?
Yes, sir. Come forward and give us your name, please.
Garrett Lane. The, it seems self-evident that it's so beautiful, it would enhance the, I think you said, the M1 area, which probably needs enhancement. So the Cs are, from what I gather and from living here, they're not too bad. So if this is so beautiful, and put it into an area, that will enhance the most rundown section, which is, I believe, I think you said, M1. And that's my comment. Also, these are 24-hour-day operations.
That's right.
I've lived near them. You have stuff left outside them. I mean, people will dump their stuff, 'cause even though there's a 24-hour-day deal there, there's somebody has to be in charge of it, 24/7, I've seen places, when I was moving, I couldn't even get into the building, because people dumped their stuff out of it. Why, I don't know. Or they dumped their trucks there, and so it becomes an eyesore. So move it in, it sounds beautiful, so move it to an area that needs enhancement. I thank you for your patience.
Thank you.
If you would, sir, before you leave, fill out a card or give us your name and everything to one of the attendants, please.
Over there, sir.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Anybody else in the audience wanna speak?
Here you go.
Hearing ended, we'll come back to closed public hearing, and come back to the council. Counsel, any other thoughts, discussion? Look for a motion to accept the ordinance, 2001-2020.
I just wanna respond to Mr. Lane there and say, yep, that's, I think this counts approval, we did agree with that, that raising the standard in the M1 district, the design standards, is what we're going to move forward with, so I think that at a minimum, we can do that. So, thank you.
And if I could clarify that, a motion supporting this ordinance would be a motion to support the design criteria of self-service storage. It would only apply in the M1 district, the way it's written right now.
And operational requirements.
And the operational requirements, yes.
Yep, as written. That's currently.
So it won't affect any storage units like the one on Center Street or the one over here? They would just be the same as always?
Yeah, they would be non-conforming, which is to say that if an existing one were to be destroyed by the technical definition of the city code, it could only be rebuilt in compliance with this code.
Okay.
In the M1.
In the M1.
M1.
But it's not written as that. I don't see any where that.
There's a controlling section of code about non-conformities that addresses all manner of non-conformities, which basically would execute that provision in any section of non-conforming areas of code.
Well, I think the code is good. I mean, and I think it's, covers all the bases. So I would make a motion to, make a motion to adopt the ordinance number 01-2020.
As written.
As written.
I'll second.
We have a motion to adopt code ordinance 01-2020. Do you call the roll place?
Mayor Proton Brown?
Against.
Mayor Hoag?
Or.
Councilmember Kellum?
Or.
Councilmember Morrison?
Four.
Councilmember Raymond?
Four.
Okay, we move on to ordinance.
Justin Bashgraw.
Number 02-2020.
This is Justin.
This is a, elections, the code of ordinances, changing qualifying periods. First reading, Mr. Gargen, please.
Okay, this is first reading of ordinance 02-2020. An ordinance of the City of Cape Canaveral, Brevard County, Florida, amending Chapter 26, elections of the code of ordinances, changing the qualifying period for candidates for offices of mayor and city council to be consistent with the requirements of the Brevard County Supervisor of Elections, providing for the repeal of prior inconsistent ordinances and resolutions, incorporation into the code, severability and an effective date. As indicated, this is first reading of this ordinance. If you recall, prior to the last election, the city was notified by the Supervisor of Elections that there were some changes to her requirements for processing ballots, which resulted in the city council adopting an emergency ordinance to modify the qualifying period, so the city's proposed ballot could be timely submitted to the Supervisor of Elections. So this ordinance is being presented to you as a permanent fix of the qualifying period provision under the code. And it just modifies the time period for qualifying for candidates so that the city can timely process a ballot to the Supervisor of Elections. In addition, there's just some technical language that's being added, that in the event the first or the last filing day of the qualifying period falls on a Saturday, Sunday, or legal holiday, the code is clear that there'll be an adjustment to the next or subsequent business day, as it's stated in the ordinance.
In the interim, does this some way save the city some funding, too, for elections go? Or does it have any adverse on our?
No impact on that.
No impact on that.
No impact on that, okay.
There is a streamlining component to this, that it would keep the qualifying period within one month, it won't overlap into another month, and it will also enable us to put it in the five-day workdays of Week 1 and the five workdays of Week 2. So effectively, it would start on a Monday and end on the following Friday. It's a very neat, compacted, two-week schedule. 10 days.
Counsel? Any comments?
Makes sense to me.
Yeah.
Go to the public hearing. Anybody wanna ask us anything about this ordinance that is being adopted? Hearing ended, we close public hearing. Come back to council for a motion. No discussion, motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve ordinance number 02-2020 on the first reading.
And I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second on ordinance number 02-2020. Do you call the roll place?
Mayor Proton Brown?
Or.
Mayor Hoag?
Or.
Councilmember Kellum?
Or.
Councilmember Morrison?
Or.
Councilmember Raymond?
Or.
That concludes our agenda. We have reports. Mrs. Kellum.
Before we do reports, I have, I would like to make a motion that the council hired Todd Morley as the official city manager and open it for discussion with the council.
Are we able to add that to the agenda?
I would not wanna hear that tonight. We have, not that I have anything against Todd, but I don't wanna go down that road because we set a precedent, and we set time, schedule, and I would like to stay with that schedule. Not that I have any problem with your motion, but doing that would be making a change that the citizens aren't alerted to that, the citizens are all aware, basically, that Todd was given six months to prove his endeavors, and I think we should leave it at that and come back at that time. Because you're trying to, you're trying to bring something which is thoughtful, and I'm not done with you for that. But that is something that public should be aware of when that takes place.
So that they have to have.
Well, they're aware of it only by TV, and you're gonna make a motion and wanna vote, and it's done. Nobody got any input.
I would just, I thought I could make a motion so we could discuss what's gonna happen, why, you know, are we moving?
In April, we will do that.
And we're?
It's the timeline we set.
Okay. With all due respect, I believe that she is full within her authority to make a motion for a discussion. With all due respect, I believe that she is full within her authority to make a motion for discussion. Um, and I, and I would like to, I didn't, if, if you don't want to discuss it, we don't have to. But if you just generally want to talk about this item, um, I, I will second that motion. And, and if it's just you and me talking, I'm happy to talk with you.
Your motion was made to hire, if I heard it right, Mr. Morley as the city manager.
Well, I had to make a motion in order to open it to discussion.
I'm not voting in support of that. I'm just seconding the motion. I can vote against that, but I'm seconding to, to at least have the discussion, if that's what Councilmember Kellum wants to do. Support of that.
Mr. Attorney. I'm going to ask Mr. Attorney on this one.
Well, we're under reports, number one. And under reports, we, we now have a, a motion to discuss whether or not to hire, um, or give direction to hire Todd as, as the permanent city manager. The council can discuss any item it wants under, under reports. It would only be a discussion item.
Right.
Just hypothetically, to the extent that the council wanted to go in that direction, you know, a contract would have to be prepared and presented at a subsequent date for final consideration by the council. So, I mean, you're free to discuss, um, but there wouldn't be other loose ends and things that would have to be done in order to do something like that.
So, I didn't word the motion correctly.
I'm not even sure, you know, I'm, well.
Well, I heard a motion to.
To discuss.
Mr.
Yeah, to, yeah, well, and I would, I would. I would treat that as a motion to discuss.
Okay.
Um, but there's, you just, you're, you're kind of under reports. I mean, you're, he's, she's bringing that up. The council's free to discuss it. I would just suggest that you're not, not in a position to take any final action whatsoever regarding that tonight.
Okay, that's, I didn't expect that tonight, but I just, but the reason I brought it up is because I think that, um, you know, we had, we gave him six months. Um, that was before me. Um, but I think that, you know, we're heading into a new budget, a new, um,
Retreat.
Retreat. That's the word, thank you. And, um, I just think that, uh, that we could make a decision before we get to the retreat or put it out for, um, for to hire someone else or put the bid out to, um, look for another person and not wait till April. And then, you know, as Todd went to the retreat, made all these great plans, and then in April, we hire someone else. Um, I just think that, you know, the city, we, we went through a bad part of our city with the last manager, and I think enough time has passed. Um, I think that Todd, um, has shown, he, he has the ability to do the job. Um, in our charter, it says that, um, you know, we, we promote on the ability to do the job and, um, on fitness and the merit, uh, evidence of competence. And he has shown all that. I think he's opened the city to, um, to the residents. He's spent a lot of time, uh, the city, um, open, city hall openness, uh, the coffee with the manager. I think that the whole atmosphere of the city hall has changed for the better. The staff is happy with Todd at the helm. And I think that, um, we need, I know that it was six months, but it's kind of not fair to wait to six months. If we're going to look for someone else, we should be doing it now and not make him wait. And then, also, I believe that, um, his 18 years of service is evidence enough that he cares for our city. And I don't think, um, it should, it's in the best interest of our city to ask the staff to replace the leader that they work so well with. And I just think he's doing a great job, and I would like to make it permanent sooner than later. And I know we can't do it tonight, but I would just wanted to open it up for discussion with the council and to see their thoughts on, on the process and where we are. That's all.
You haven't said a thing I don't like, okay? So, I'm, I'm pretty sure, and I'm sitting here and I know how everybody feels and how staff feel. Everybody, I think, feels the same way you're talking. But if we can do anything, but we can't tonight. Maybe we can move the date forward if we so choose. That would be council's privy to do that. But we set a date back, what, four months ago or whatever it was? And it's, yeah, six months is a long time, but, uh, Todd's probably proven himself to me. I, I don't have a problem. But when we set a date and then we try to do something like tonight, when you made, made the motion that you made, that was not something that we can do without going back and notifying the public. And we can maybe, if you so desire tonight, consensus the council to move the date forward. That's possible. There's nothing wrong with that. But we have to notify public 30 days, give them a month's notice and put a notification in the newspaper to fulfill our legal obligations, so.
Right, I just didn't word it.
Right, I didn't mean, no, we ain't going to do it tonight. No, we can't do it tonight. But you can surely, with consensus from council, if you so want to try to go that direction and, and get everybody to give consensus. But everybody would have to agree to that, because it was.
Well, I agree with everything that, um, Ms. Kellum said, but I don't think she was here to, to all the grief that the council endured, because we, the, a lot of the citizens thinks that we moved too quick. I think we have a date that's been set, and I think it'd be in the best interest of the city to go ahead and, and stay with those dates. And I totally agree with everything that you've said. But this is one of the issues that we had that came before us. So, he's doing a good job. Let's stay on course and keep it as it is, and, and it'll come back before council.
Got a question. Our, our retreat is what date? Is it March?
25th.
25th, and our council meeting is March?
17.
17.
Okay, so we would have our council meeting before the 25th. And Councilmember Kellum, if I understand, you're saying, you know, if you could have gone back, you wouldn't have done six months. You'd have done 90 days more, like a three-month.
And I think if you, if the six months, if, if you were going to wait six months, in six months, are you going to give him the job? Or are you going to then go out to look for someone? Which will extend this not knowing another three, four months. I'm just saying, um, I think that he's proven himself. I mean, that's just my opinion. I think that it's kind of hard for anyone to do their job with this looming over their head for six months. And then, at the end of six months, are we going to go, okay, well, six months is over, now we're going to put the job out? Uh, I just don't think that's fair. And I know I wasn't on the council.
I felt the same way when we first started discussing this, about what you just said, about sitting there waiting. But I think Todd's pretty confident with what's going on. And I don't, I don't think we'd have a problem. We'd meet, what, four or five days after that meeting? Or we could probably schedule for that meeting. No problem with that. But we have to give the public notice to do it. We can't just do it at a whim. It's something that you probably might get two or three people in there, you might not get anybody. But it's, it's something, I, I don't have a problem if you want to put a motion out for moving it to that date, a couple of days before we meet, before his, his six, what's, what's the 25th, is that?
The six. The, the retreat is on March 25th.
Yeah, yeah.
This is my fourth council meeting, but the sixth one will be April.
Five-plus months. Yeah, I think, I don't have a problem with that. I, I think, but it depends on the rest of the council.
I think we should stick to our schedule, and I'll tell you why. I think that the public deserves the notice. I think the public was quite engaged when we went through the whole city manager issue.
We had somebody interested in it that spoke on it, so.
But I feel that that, I feel we should stick to our schedule. I have not seen a resume from Todd yet, and I'd like to see a resume. I haven't seen one yet.
I'll forward it to you.
Thank you. I appreciate that. I think that this is just part of the professionalism in hiring, uh, a city manager. And I feel that this is important. And I, it's nothing personal whatsoever. I just think that this is the way that we professionally hire people. Thank you.
I think if you look at the time, we're, you know, the next meeting's March. Um, I think it's, no matter what route we go, the point that does stand out to me is you get to April, you know, time's up, what do we do? You know, and I think that if we could agree to have a discussion about this at March to continue this, so the public has an opportunity to get involved and reiterate, then we'll have, we'll have the discussion, we'll get to express and give the, the public a chance to express what we should do. We'll go into our, our retreat. Uh, that's going to be a great learning experience. That'll be the first time this council's really ever had a chance to work, roll up our sleeves and get to work with the entire staff and Todd. Uh, and then, guess what? We're at, we're in April. I mean, we're there at that point, and we can stick to our schedule. I think we can agree, though, that inserting a meeting, at the next meeting, at least having a placeholder for a discussion item, I would be in support of that. So, so we, we're not building up this pressure, and we're continuing to communicate it along the way. That way, all of us, as a council, can look at the public and say, we talked about this three out of the four, you know, meetings. We kept it in front of us, continuing. And so, um, if, if that's, you know, I would, I don't, we don't need a motion to do that. I mean, any council member here can add that on as a discussion item.
Exactly.
Kind of like playing in the outfield. Somebody's got to say, I got it, you know?
And we've done our due diligence.
Yeah.
And, you know, this is part of the professional method that we've used. Boom, boom, boom. I think it's, it's for Todd's benefit, too.
Well, I, you asked for Todd's resume. Are we going to get resumes from other people between now and April?
We haven't asked for any.
Well, that's where I don't.
We haven't asked for any. We haven't had any type of a search or anything like that. I just said that I would like to see it. Thank you.
I, I feel confident that we're going to move forward in the right direction when it comes here.
Shall we record consensus to schedule a discussion item on the March council agenda?
Yes.
Okay. Will do. And thank you for all the kind words.
Anything else, Ms. Kellum?
Uh, no, I just wanted to say that, um, thank you to the staff for all the sea oats out there. I had a great time planning them. I also went to the League of Cities and also the Brevard County Commissioners' meeting, where they were discussing Cherry Down Park, which looks really favorable for the city. And, um, and it took me two days to recover from planning sea oats. It was a lot of fun, and thank you. And thank you to the staff for the great, um, open house and coffee with the, um, city manager. I think we're heading in the right direction all the way around, and I'm really proud of our city and proud of our staff. Thank you. Oh, and then we have Veterans Park, which we're working on with Gustavo. Uh, we have a meeting Monday. Uh, we had a good meeting at the VFW. A lot of, uh, input from the veterans on what they would like to see there. And I'm real happy, uh, the way it's going. And Gustavo's doing a great job helping us get our ideas together. It'll be a place of, um, you know, remembrance and solitude and, and a place of, um, for everyone to enjoy. So, that's what we're working on.
Andrew.
I took a break during January into February and went to Israel and Jordan. And, uh, it was a wonderful trip. And if you ever have the experience or the chance to do this, take, please take the opportunity, because it's really a wonderful, wonderful spiritual experience. I'd like to just, uh, tell you that I haven't done a whole lot, because I was away. But last week on, I think it was the 11th, I went to the Cocoa City Hall to see the presentation that was done by the TPO. And they're going to have two other presentations in Brevard County, explaining exactly what the DOT has planned, and it looks good for A1A. I'm keeping my fingers crossed that we will actually get some of our work that we would like done, especially reducing the speed limit to 35. I also went to the open house, that the, uh, art show over at the library, Friday and Saturday. And I was there a few hours on Saturday for the presentations. And as usual, the local art, some of which is displayed here in our chambers and around city hall. Uh, I'm very proud of our local artists, and I think that they really have something culturally to say about our area that is so special. So, I really do support that art show, and I know others do, too. And, uh, that's probably about it. And I attended the open house, two hours on Friday and two hours on Saturday. And I think it's a great opportunity to meet with our residents and discuss many things, like joining some of our advisor reports, so, thank you very much. And thanks for everything that the staff does. Thank you. Oh, I have to say one other thing. I think, if you haven't seen this, City of Cape Canaveral, State of the City. This was online as well. This is just wonderful. The staff worked very hard on this, and it really explains what's going on in our city. And I don't think anybody should have a question necessarily, because it's all right here. And I'm so proud of our staff for putting this together. And, uh, I think that we also continue to work with Molly, uh, trying to see what's going on with the Japanese Educational Travel Grant. And, um, hopefully, that will be successful, and some of us will go on to Japan. Thank you.
Echoing everything that the council said. I love our city. It's February. It's time of love, and it is a good place to be. So, I'm, I'm just thankful for everyone. Don't want to get too sappy over here, but seriously, I'm so proud of our staff. Every single one of you and this council, working hard. If you look at how far we've come and, you know, I think we're well-rounded. We're not letting things fall through the cracks. We're working together. We, Mayor Ameritas is all the events and, and helping us stay on track. And thank you so much. The open house was, exceeded my expectations, top-notch. Um, really, really, uh, good experience to, to be a part of that. Sea oats, 10,000 more sea oats went in the ground. We're investing in our community. We can go back and see those grow up, see the Little League out there kicking off and just driving around. Uh, makes me really, really happy. And yes, Councilmember Kellum and Gustavo, thank you for leading the veterans event. That was a really, uh, cool experience to, to listen to them and hear some of the ideas with, with, with the parks. Um, and, you know, Friday Fest was a hit. I, I just really, really excited to be here, and it's such an honor to serve. And, and as Councilmember Raymond said, that State of the City report, I don't think we saw it last year, not, but it came out and made up for it. Very well done. Easy, comprehensive, easy to understand, but comprehensive as well. And, uh, congrats to the finance, and, and the list goes on and on. And if you have not, if you're feeling down, uh, I recommend, uh, if you've never spoke to Waste Pro, when the trash comes by. The gentleman who, the serviceman who runs on my street on Ridgewood, do not know his name, but it, it ain't about remembering people's names. It's about remembering how they make you feel. Every time I talk to him, I just want to compliment Waste Pro. He just brings it to the next level. And, uh, it was Valentine's Day, he's dropping the trash off, and I said, hey, man, I love you. And he, he, you know, stopped what he's doing, serious, walked straight up to me, and he said, I don't need Valentine's Day to love you. I love you every single day of the year. We got the best city, the best team, and so, just really, really cool. Um, thank you to our sheriff's department, first responders. Really, really happy to be in Cape Canaveral, so, thank y'all.
I had it this morning. I have to tell him. I had it this morning from our Waste Pro gentleman, who said that the garden was, I was working on the garden. The garden is beautiful, and you're beautiful, and the city's beautiful. And I, I really had it on, I, he put it on thick this morning, so, I know who you're talking about.
Okay, I want, I want to thank the citizens of Cape Canaveral that participated in the mayor's.
Okay, I want to thank the citizens of Cape Canaveral that participate in the mayor's fitness challenge, I know Arlo and his wife were there for the original kickoff in Vieira, and then the Moonlight, or the Moonlight Walk in Manatee, were you there also, Rob? I know you've got your shirt on, supporting the city, and Cape Canaveral is in first place as we speak right now.
Right now, yes.
So that's good, so hopefully the citizens will keep that up. Also, Friday Fest, the city, appreciate the city doing what they're doing for the parent-teacher organization for Capeview, and baseball, they both did the fundraiser there, and they did very well. Also, it was good, the meeting with the county commissioners went well, and all the commissioners, or the, all of, everybody that showed up, thank you. Also, please keep Trooper Bullet in your thoughts and prayer, he was senselessly murdered on I-95 about a week and a half ago, so please keep his family in your thoughts. Sea oat restoration was very good, next day, if you're not out there used to doing that, your muscles are a little sore, so had a good time out there. Want to thank the staff for everything they do, we've got a beautiful city, and I like everything about it, and I'm not going anywhere, so thank you, everybody be safe, and want to thank the first responders for everything that you do, be safe out there, thank you.
Nothing left for me to say, they said it all. But I did, I did a couple, well, we did sea oat planting, it was great, I think maybe next year we need to nail down about another 5,000 or so of those things, maybe another 10,000. But the art show was fantastic.
Yes.
I don't know if y'all got there enough, but it was great. It's sometimes really worse things, you got a lot of talented people, we have people right here in Cape Canaveral that are very good artists, and you don't know them unless you know them, and that's the place to meet them. I enjoyed it, and hopefully we do a lot, a lot of good things, get our Multi-Gen building going, and get the Cape building going, and a lot of good things are going to happen this year. And Waste Water and Public Works over there, Mr. Ratliff is after some big bucks, so we'll do a lot of good things this year. With that, anybody want to say anything?
A couple things, the...
Down to you.
Sorry, Gustavo, correct me if I'm wrong, the RFP for the Multi-Gen at the Cape Center goes off, goes out February 27th? Okay.
Mrs. Gentle Cory wants to say something.
Mayor Hoag, you asked me to stay, and I just wanted to confirm that I was confirmed to be on with...
You were confirmed during the consent agenda, probably item number three on the consent, I think it was.
Yeah.
Yes.
See you tomorrow night.
That is a whole...
You didn't have a copy of the agenda?
No.
Okay, I'm sorry, I think it was three or somewhere up in there, four, item number four.
At least we weren't here until 10 o'clock, so consider yourself lucky, thank you.
We can have the attorney talk to you again if you want. Thank you, Nancy.
Three other quick things, the after-hours chat with city manager is this Thursday at 6:00. We have the Founder's Day Spring Festival coming up on the 29th, which is a week from this Saturday at Manatee Sanctuary Park, and I will be attending the ICMA conference in Durham, North Carolina, the first week of March, I'll be gone four days that week. And a pleasure to serve here, thank you.
I just have one question real quick, because of that petition, I know Todd and I, we've talked about the street plan that you're going, that you're going to implement, can we do anything faster to help those people? I mean, they, they got a petition, they're really serious.
We'd like, I'd like to have staff reach out to them and tell them what we do have planned, we have an item coming up for the retreat, as we've all discussed, that will address these neighborhood plans and the study that's been done on all the traffic.
Okay, I just don't want to ignore...
I think that'll give them a sense of peace of mind, we can reach out to them, so we need to get that information.
Okay.
I think Brenda caught him in the lobby.
Oh, okay, good.
Gave him a heads up on what we do have coming.
Oh, good.
She did, yeah.
Anybody have anything they want to bring forward? Johnny, Andy, you good?
Thanks, appreciate it.
Thank you for coming, leading the journey.